Cable ready when you are.
They got the hall, it's just the Kingdom Hall.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody, call the meeting to order. This is the, first I need to say that this meeting is being recorded and it will be shown on Channel 9 and on YouTube, so. This is a Board of Selectmen meeting, regular meeting, on Wednesday, July 12th, 2017. I'd like to start the meeting by a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, in whose power and authority stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're all standing, I would like to mention two individuals that had, where, one was a resident of the town and one served the town as superintendent of schools. Dr. Richard Gross was superintendent of schools at Bristol Plymouth for a number of years and retired, I'm gonna guess about two years ago. He passed away last week at the age of 58. I also want to mention Donald Peck, the resident of the town on Semisah Avenue. Donald retired probably five or six years ago. Donald served on the Finance Committee for a number of years and he passed away suddenly also, so I would ask a moment of silence in memory of Dr. Richard Gross and Donald Peck. Thank you. Sympathies to their families.
We always open up with public input for anything that's not on the agenda. So anybody have any public input? We're gonna go a little bit out of order here so we can kinda do the quick things first and the other things. So the first piece of, wanna talk about the Board of Health agent job description and the Board of Health folks are here to kinda make a presentation about that.
Evening, Board, good evening, residents. As you are aware, we've had a few retirees, retirements, resignations on the Board since we have split the Board, which created a bigger problem for the Board to try to get it to where it needs to be. The last two meetings we've prepared and just approved tonight, a Health Inspector, Health Agent position, which includes 25 hours of work within the Board of Health. Last week, I think you had the job descriptions at that time, and I'm hoping, so we did approve this tonight and we're gonna try to get it published as soon as possible after the Board hopefully approves it. If you disapprove it, I guess it doesn't get published. Any questions on it?
No, I haven't, no.
I guess my question is, do you have a specific timeline, like when you would like the new application?
By the time it's all, yeah, I would love to have it tomorrow, but by the time it's all setting done, I'm thinking it's gonna be September before we, the only thing that, we will do the, probably, up until the last three applicants and then if you'd want us, we'll send some recommendations to you and you can choose from the last three, if we get that many. I hope this isn't like the Town Administrator thing, but there are three or four towns looking for health agents. So it's been, it's been difficult to, I'm hoping for the best that we can get this staffed as quickly as possible because we have a situation where even though the, as you're well aware, the newest member is also our health agent, who I had asked for our town accountant, is there any possible way that we could get him paid temporarily? And the answer was no, so here we are, and he won't be able to do any inspections. Nothing of major, we've already discussed this, none of us are opposed to going out on a quick 10, 15 minute thing, drafting up a letter. You know, but when it comes to a perk test, which is three hours, I think we're asking quite a bit of, you know, for us to, our hearts aren't that big. Love the town of Dyton, but...
But you have a temporary fix to that, don't you? I thought you were gonna bring in somebody from another town.
We, we do have, yeah, we're gonna work it out, it's, we're gonna reach out to some of the other communities and try to take care of that, but I don't see this getting filled till at least September.
Am I correct, I think I am, that you, within your budget, you have the funds available to step, to pay this particular...
Yes.
So there's no additional funds required, my point?
No. As a matter of fact, under our, what our plan is going forward is, we have a, as you know, Jerry Bernard, our engineer, who does, that is gonna be assumed by the Board of Health going forward, once we get a lot of things in place, not right?
In the plan review?
Plan review, yeah. So actually, there's, I had figured it out, between what the perk agent did, what the health agent did, and what the plan review did, it covers the 32-5 and have money left, still has money left to boot in our professional and technical, so it's not gonna cost anything.
Did you approve the description the way the copy we have here?
The only thing that was added on the very first, second page of the main ones, was all it says, "See attached job description."
Okay.
That's the only thing we added. It's different than...
The only comment I made, you said on page one, it refers to the actual description. The only thing I, comment I made was that there should be a mention that this is a 24/7 position, which means you can be called at any time, you don't have, you're not gonna work 24/7.
Yeah.
But I was thinking of when we'd get those calls?
I think we got that in here somewhere, 'cause we talked about that.
On-call 24/7 for health issues, fires, oil spills, et cetera.
Okay, all right.
It's in there, right?
With starting September with this person, who's gonna do the school inspections that have to be done before school opens?
We're actually hoping it before September, we're just taking last, wait if it's...
End of August, but if, if it doesn't happen, 'cause I know that's a...
I can do a full inspection as well and...
I know that's an annual thing before school opens.
We'll get it done, figure it out.
Between all of us, we have, we have another agent, we have a commissioner, an agent, I think we can get it done, we'll just, we'll do it a lot quicker because it is a busy office, and it just keeps, you can't do it again.
I'm gonna be taking a food management course next month, August 3rd, so I'll be available then also for food inspections.
Anything that's like an absolute emergency, needs to be dealt with right away, like the schools, that's mandated by the state, you know, like that?
That's the only thing I could think of that would be coming up in that time period, and I know, I know that the fire chief and the building commissioner and the inspectors have to go to the schools, so, yeah.
I'd like to get back to, really to this, though, because that's a logistical thing that you guys will have to work out, we can, but, but let's get back to this job description. So, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the proposal by the Board of Health for a Health Inspector slash Health Agent, 25 hours, with the attached job descriptions for a Health Agent.
I second that.
Any further discussion? Home, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, great.
Just to add to that, I'm gonna be working with Rosalind and Karen probably on Monday to get this thing into a couple of health, like MMA, Beacon, MHOA, so those are the two we'd like to see them get in, plus locally.
Yeah, the 22nd, I think, is the cutoff for MMA, so you got time.
Yeah, so I'm not sure when we created this, that we created a advertising budget. I don't know if I could, I could take it out of professional and technical, but I don't know if the accountant will let us do that. I guess I'm asking to play on your dime.
We'll work it out somehow.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for the approval, have a good night, have a good night, everybody.
Mr. Chairman, before you go. He's like, who? If, if I can make a suggestion, when we first posted the Town Administrator position in just the Beacon, it was, we didn't get many hits. They, I think it's like 10 extra dollars for them to also put it on their website, the MMA website, I think that's, would be a 10, a $10 worth spent.
Yeah, I think we had talked about that, yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We can afford it.
Yeah, we're gonna try to get it done on Monday with the help of, she's not here, but...
But if we can get it posted to the town's website, because I think we're gonna reference the full job description, go to the town site, so we'll hear that.
Yeah, we're gonna be linking, we're only gonna advertise like the first paragraph there and with a link, I don't know anything about links or computers or any of that stuff other than, you know, so we'll be looking for a little help.
Absolutely.
From the staff there, so...
We got a resident here.
I know.
We'll get it done.
All right.
Appreciate all the work that you did as a board.
Yeah, all's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna go a little bit out of order because the next two items under Old Business are probably gonna take the most discussion, so I wanna get some of the easier ones out of the way so that, so I'm gonna get into New Business and I have a memo here from the Tom Ferry Superintendent of Streets concerning the sidewalks that we're putting in on Center Street. "Selectmen, please consider retracting your vote of my recommendation last week for the Center Street sidewalk extension. It's been brought to my attention that there are new procurement requirements for this type of bidding from the, from our Inspector General's office. What was overlooked is not only do we need to use the central registry and local paper, which we did, we also need to pass this through Mass Comm by. This was enacted last October 2016, sorry for the trouble, more importantly, I'm sorry to our residents that are waiting to get to, to have this job undertaken." So basically, we bid it, but we skipped one step, so legally, we have to go back and do that, which will probably put the project off till next year, I believe, right?
No, no.
No, it's not gonna put it, okay.
You wanna, Mr. Ferry?
Evening.
Hello.
You already read the letter?
I did, I did.
Yes, that, that small step is not, it's not an option.
Right.
It has to be done. As far as the scheduling, if we post it this week or early next week for the following Friday, central registry, we could possibly still start that project early August.
Okay.
Maybe second week of August. If we get everything in place after that, then we may have to entertain either a restriction on the work hours or postpone it to next summer.
Just so everybody knows, we're trying to get that project done before the Aggie goes back to school, so the kids aren't involved and cause a problem, traffic and everything else, so, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we rescind the vote to award the contract for the Center Street sidewalk project to G. Loops.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, home, favor say aye?
Okay, we're under discussion, I just wanna, just wanna say, just to clarify this for the residents of Center Street, hopefully this will not cause a big delay. We still wanna get it done this year because if we don't get it done this year, I gotta go out and have the appraiser come back and do the work all over again, and we don't wanna go through that expense or that time. And the other thing was, that I had suggested to Mr. Ferry, was that if we can start in August, they can work regular work hours. What we may have to do, when the first school opens, whether it's Somerset, Aggie, or D.R., whatever the first date is, we may have to put a restriction of a 9 to 2 work day on it, but the state did that and they still got the bridge built, so I'm sure we can get this done, just so everybody knows, we're gonna try to get this done as fast as possible.
So, a motion in a second, home, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. The next item is a recommendation from our police chief to appoint four reserve officers. And this, this is from Chief McDonald to the Board of Selectmen. "It's my recommendation that the Board of Selectmen appoint the following candidates as reserve officers. Alora Brock on 5 Commercial Drive, Lakeville, Mass. Joseph Dupont on Chase Street in North Dyton. Daniel Sylvia on New Bedford Road in Rochester. And Willie Patterson on Thomas Street in Fall River. Each of the above-named applicants have completed the proper medical PAT test, which is a physical and...
Agility test.
Agility test, and psychological testing required for employment, so..."
Mr. Chairman, I mean that the following candidates be appointed to Reserve Police Officer list. Alora Brock, Joseph Dupont, Daniel Sylvia, and Willie Patterson, as recommended by the police chief.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? If not, home, favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. "A road opening permit for Columbia Gas at 260 Pearl Street." Okay, this is from Columbia Gas, permission to see by grant, this is from actually, yeah, request from Columbia Gas to install new gas service at 260 Pearl Street, Dyton, Mass. And, "Whenever possible pipes are to be jetted under the roadway, any unsuitable material will be replaced with gravel and two layers of two-inch compacted asphalt for total four inches of asphalt. All gravel, gravel will be compacted in 12-inch layers, the board is to be, the road is to be placed back in the same or better condition than when the project was started."
Mr. Chairman?
I'll make a motion that we approve the road opening permit for Columbia Gas at 260 Pearl Street.
Second.
Home, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, the special articles under, there's a number of accounts that, that were, that are open, that we need to make a decision on whether to close them or keep them open. The first one is the public address system, and this was, I think, at middle school? In any, in any case?
No, that was the one, that's the PA system that we brought for town meetings.
Okay. Okay. Anyways, that, that purchase has been made, there's $361.17 in that account, and there's no need for that money, so we'd go back into free cash. The second one is a, the Grange renovations over here to make an annex to this town hall. The original appropriation of $125,000, the balance is $92,949.30. And that project is ongoing, so we need to, we need to keep that. So my recommendation is we keep that account open. The demolition of Van Geisen Hall, we have $50,000 in the appropriation, we have $50,000 balance, that, that, there's an auction next week when that should be resolved, so we need to keep that open until that is done. Van Geisen Hall Memorial, Van Geisen Hall Memorial, $5,000, and this was to create a small memorial on the side that would talk about the history of that building, so it won't be lost to history. And there was $5,000 in there, there remains $5,000, again, once the Van Geisen is resolved, that will be used. And then telephone security system, that's for, I assume, the one in this building?
Yeah.
It's $24,000, there's $7,247.2 left there, and that is still ongoing, so we need to keep that account open. So, that being said...
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we close out the public address system account number 122-5850, $361.17.
I second that.
Okay, home, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I rec, I move that we advise the town accountant that we intend to keep the following accounts open because of this, the work is ongoing. Grange renovations, 192-5250, $92,949.30. The demolition of the Van Geisen Hall, account 192-5300, $50,000. The Van Geisen Memorial, account 192-5780, $5,000. And the telephone security system, account 192-5870, $7,247.2.
Second.
Home, favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, let's get to the, I'm gonna go back up now, to Old Business, be, recommendation for bylaw concerning minimal maintenance on accepted roads, and I assume that's what mostly you're here for. We had a, we had a meeting with, with our attorney back at the end of May, and then just last month, he got back to us, and it's got, there's a lot, there's a lot to this letter, but the first issue is that they're unacceptable roads, and their advice to the town is, you know, we, we now maintain those roads, we plow the roads, Tom Ferry goes down and grades and to keep the potholes out and stuff, and we can continue to do that. However, we'll have to go to town meeting, um, pardon this. Okay. And they're, they're advising us, he's advising us not to, to do that because it's a liability, so we're gonna try to minimize that liability by going to town meeting. "In our opinion, in order to maintain private ways in Dyton Rock Park neighborhood, the town would need to act in accordance with MGL Chapter 40, Section 6N. The statute states that, that towns made by, may, by bylaw, provide for making temporary repairs on private ways. Such a bylaw must determine the type and extent of repairs, if drainage shall be included, if the repairs are required by public necessity, the number or percentage of abudders who must petition for such repairs, if betterment charges shall be assessed, the liability limit of the city or town on account of damages caused by such repairs, if the ways shall have been opened to public use for a term of years, and if a cash deposit shall be required for said repairs. In our opinion, the town must adopt a bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter 40, Section 6N, before expending public funds to maintain the private ways within the Dyton Rock Park neighborhood. If property owners within Dyton Rock Park neighborhood are requesting that the town maintain the roads within the neighborhood, then the provisions of Chapter 40, Section 6N should be brought to their attention and the proposed bylaw could be placed on a town meeting warrant, either by the selectmen or at the request of property owners within the neighborhood." So, we'll entertain discussion, let me just tell you where we are. You know, we've been maintaining the roads, and I think as taxpayers, you deserve that, you know, you pay tax like everybody else, so, my opinion anyways, and I think, I think we all agree, that, you know, we wanna make, we wanna continue to do that, but we need to do it legally to protect the town. So, what we will do, if we all agree to this tonight, we'll put a bylaw, we'll put a, a warrant article together with a bylaw that our attorneys will help draft, draft, and that will go on the fall special town meeting, it'll be voted on at that meeting. Anything you guys wanna add to that, or?
The, the process for a bylaw is, it gets drafted, and once this board has a chance and other officials in town have a chance to look at it, it will be made public, and there will have to be a public hearing held sometime before town meeting, but during that time that it's out there in the public, obviously, any kind of comments that people would like to make, and I wanna make everyone understand, we're not only talking about Dyton Rock Park, we have other gravel roads in town that have not been accepted, and we do minimum maintenance on them. So, if this bylaw passes, it would allow us to do it on any of those unacceptable roads, and we're only talking about maintenance at this point, but it would bring, it would bring the town into compliance with those sections of the Massachusetts general laws. So, so if we vote tonight to go ahead with our attorney drafting this, the process isn't over, and you will have an opportunity to be aware of what's in it, to comment on it, and there will be actually a formal public hearing that will be posted in the paper and everything else, okay?
So, does anybody have any comments or thoughts about that? If you would, just step to the podium, give us your, your name and your address, and then...
My name is Nicole Allen, and it's 199 Beach Street in Dyton Rock Park. Does this bylaw make it public roads?
No.
Not yet, no.
Not, not yet.
Well, that, this bylaw we're talking about now does not make it a public road.
Okay, does it pave, pave the path to make it a public road?
No, it does not, but we're gonna talk about that issue next.
Okay, then I'll be back on that.
This is, this is only for temporary, okay, temporary repairs, to do, to basically do what Tom's been doing now. He grades it occasionally, piles the snow, keeps it open, so you guys can get in and out, makes, make sure it's open for police and fire and that kind of emergency vehicles. That's all this, that's all this particular thing does, we're gonna talk about the other in just a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Susan Burrows, Park Ave. So, am I to make an assumption, if I'm correct, please correct me, 95% of the population who vote on this have, will not, it doesn't impact about 95% of the people who will vote on this bylaw?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I mean, that, that's how town government, town meeting works, so, but, why is it important for people to go to town meeting? Any other comments or questions? Okay. We'll entertain them, oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
It's a quick question. Am I to do any workday until this is cleared up?
What's the status of the roads right now? Have they been graded or gravled this year?
It has been gravled recently, yes.
I, I, I think we have to be a little flexible on that, we need to make sure the roads are maintained for safety purposes, so that, you know, fire and police and all that, and if it snows before October, we'll have bigger problems than worrying about you guys down there, so, so I, yeah.
While everyone's in the room, so they can worry us again.
Yeah.
So, it's your call, Tom.
Yeah.
If you've detected something has to be done before we get the bylaw passed, then it has to be done.
We're not gonna abandon you because of this, so, but you have a problem, here's the answer. Okay, any other comments or questions?
I'd just like everyone in the room to know that...
Why don't you identify who you asked, everybody knows.
I'm sorry, Jim, I have a building question, I don't know about you. I know you alluded to that this affects other roads in town, so, I know we're gonna do a deeper discussion on the next article on the, on the agenda tonight, but this article is imperative to deal with other streets in town that don't have so much of an objection from some of the taxpayers, so, it's probably gonna make the war regardless, so if you have an opinion, come to the public hearing, please.
Good. Anything else? Okay, I want to see a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, could I have that, please? That we authorize town council to draft a bylaw in accordance with Mass General Laws Chapter 40, Section 6N, relative to the minimal maintenance of unacceptable roads in town.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? If none, home, favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. The next, um, next issue, my, my agenda, well, whatever. The next issue is, on the agenda is, recommendation regarding acceptance of town roads. And this is similar, similar issue, just a little more extensive, and it results in something a little more. So, those are unacceptable roads, we have several unacceptable roads throughout the town. So the question is, do we have to consider, and this would also go on the, the town meeting, is do we accept, does the town accept the roads? And if the town accepts the roads, then we would, you know, continue to plow them and do other maintenance on them on a regular basis, so they would be, you know, they would be maintained as a, as a road in town should be maintained. Now, your question about would it be paved, not necessarily, I'm sorry.
I asked if it was public.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it would, it would be public.
Did you wanna address this issue?
Well, I'll wait till these...
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So they would be, they would be public roads, they would be, be maintained in the same manner that other roads within the town are maintained. One of the, as you know, there's been a lot of issues going... One of the, as you know, there's been a lot of issues going on down in that area.
Could I ask what kind of issues have been going on? Because as, as far as I know, I don't know of any.
Okay. Well, there's issues with where are property boundaries? Where can things be, where can, where can vehicles be parked on the street? Where can structures be, 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 be made? And so that's, that's an issue.
Wouldn't that be more of an individual issue?
Well, well, it is an individual issue, but it's also an issue that would, you know, will be addressed throughout that neighborhood. Throughout, not that neighborhood only, but through any neighborhood where we have unacceptable roads.
I mean, if somebody wanted to know where the boundary lines were, they would have it surveyed.
Yeah, but we, but as a town, we don't know where the road boundaries are. So that would be, that, and that's what we're gonna get to. We don't know where the road boundaries are. So we don't know if people are parking on, on other people's land or they're parking on the road. So, that would be our intent to, the, the first action we would, we would recommend, and Jim has gotten a quote, is to go down and survey the roads in Dyton Rock Park. And put some property markers in so we know where the roads, where the roads actually are. Because right now, there's no.
I can tell you where every road is. I can tell you forty feet on every road. I can tell you the corners where they're cut on every road.
Yeah, but there's no, there's no markers.
Why would the town spend $10,000 to survey private roads?
Well, because we're, we're talking about accepting them as town.
Well, should that, should we discuss that now? I'm against that totally.
Okay. But you see, we, um.
A bylaw's good for the maintenance.
All of that is no advantage for residents or the town. Being the final, they are a part of the community.
Well, there is an advantage to the town so that we can, you know, restore some order there.
Do I need to readdress who I am?
Yeah, well, yes.
Susan Burrows, Park Ave. I don't, we seem to be tiptoeing around these quote, "issues." Someone needs to step to the plate, excuse, let me finish, please.
Oh, sure.
Step to the plate and address, bing, 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 what the issues are, where the issues are, why the issues have occurred. Have they been addressed? Have they not been addressed? Are they going to be addressed? If they've been addressed, how are they going to be resolved? If they're not gonna be resolved, why? How are they going to be resolved?
Okay.
I have deeded beach rights. You become a public road, you are changing my deed. You are changing my deed. Who paid for council in town? My taxes?
Everybody's debt.
Okay, who's gonna pay for me to get a lawyer to change my deed? I already spoke to my attorney at the bank today. This is an issue. So I want other people to be aware.
I'm not clear why.
Your mortgage, if you have a mortgage, it's affected. Your deed is affected. Everything needs to be rewritten, refiled, and you're gonna pay for it.
I'm not sure why. I'm not sure why the deed.
Thank you.
I'm not sure why the deed would have to be rewritten.
Because I have deeded beach rights. You are changing my deed.
When you make it public.
You are changing my deed.
That invites the public down to our area.
And it's on our beach, we pay for it.
I'm not a lawyer, but if, even if it's a, a public road, it doesn't give people the, the right to go on your property.
I didn't say that. I said, I have deeded beach rights. That means you go public. My deed has to be changed.
No longer private, right?
My deed says I have beach rights. Quote, unquote, there was a statement that the beach would become public beach.
I didn't say that.
Right there, Mr. Brett said it, that we can go down there, do some landscaping, it's right on the recording, and pull out a pylon that's in front of somebody else's house. So if you're gonna go public, our deeds will change when it says you have deeded beach rights.
I know you do.
So, if you're going to go public, I'm trying to make you aware of the ramifications of every deed in this room will have to be changed. Everyone will have to get a lawyer. Everyone will have to go to their bank if they have a mortgage and refile their deed. So that needs to be out in the open. If you don't agree with me on this, you do what you want.
No, I'm just, I just want.
Let me finish. I have the right to speak right now.
Oh, absolutely, I'm just trying to.
Well, no, you're interrupting me. We have deeded beach rights. End of story. You go public, every person in this room has to have their deed rewritten, refiled.
Not if we don't take that away from you.
I just said that, though. You're not listening. I just said, if you go public, you have said you are going to make the beach public. It was on last week's meeting.
No, but that was not a decision that was made, there was a comment about.
But it was on, well, then it shouldn't have been made.
But let me, let me back up then. We're not gonna take anybody's deeded rights away. That's not the, that's not the intent.
If you're taking it and making it public, it invites the public to come down and do what they want in our area and use the beach because now they think it's public.
And there goes our safe and secure area.
Absolutely.
People parking along. To ride their bikes around like they normally do.
First of all, we're not, I mean, I'm glad you're bringing these things up because those are things we need to talk about. And we need to talk about it with our lawyers as well. There's no intent here to, to, to take away anybody's rights down there, believe me.
We know all the roads are accepted.
Okay, okay. I mean, that, that. Right. I know, and that, and, and there's no intent to change the deeds. The roads.
You have to if you go public.
Let me, ma'am, can I, ma'am, ma'am, okay. Let's, just let us talk about this over. You know, we don't know the answer to that question. And we'll certainly talk to our legal counsel. Because as I said, our intent is not to affect your deeds or take anything away from you. Our, our intent is to make sure you get services like everybody else in town that pays the taxes you pay. Yes, sir, could you come up to the podium so we can, whoever's speaking?
Joe Alexander, 168 Washington Street. As far as I can see, it's done.
Oh, it's not done?
You're gonna do the thing to, to maintain the minimum maintenance on the roads. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay.
Accepting the roads, I don't know how that came about. To spend $10,000 of taxpayers' money to survey anybody else's road. Now, I'm not saying this down the park.
One of the issues.
That's ridiculous. If I have a question on my boundaries, I'll have my property surveyed. I had my property surveyed. I've got four stakes in the corner of my property, and many of them have. We know where our property is.
Okay.
And the roads are community, communities. And the beach is the communities. And I think we all get along fairly well.
Well, we did, most of the time.
Okay.
There's one problem, and I don't believe he's here.
Oh, is he? I want to make one thing clear. We're, we're not here to fight with you. We're here to have your input so we can make sure we do the right thing and don't, and don't impact you negatively. And I'm glad you're bringing this up because we don't know this. That's why we're here. I mean, we're not gonna do anything under the table, behind closed doors, or anything like that. There is issues down there with, with. Let me just summarize what the issues are. And you, and you know most of them. Okay, let me, let me speak, let me speak. Okay. There is, there is property owners down there that think they own pieces of, pieces of. No, there's more than one. That think they own pieces of property that, that they probably don't. And the, and, and, let me just finish, let me, let me just finish. And the issue becomes one of, if someone parks a camper on the side of the road, as one, as one. If you, if you guys don't want to listen to what I have to say, then, but I would, I would request that you listen to what I have to say and show some respect to this board. There is issues down there where someone is parking vehicles, campers, whatever, in a spot that it's not clear whose, whose property they're on, okay? And we have no way of knowing that. As, as a town, we have no way of knowing that. Well, you can say, Mr. Rose, that we do, but we don't.
It's on the street. It's on the street.
It's a forty feet wide, that camper's on the street. Anybody who parks on the side, it's on the street.
You only can know that that camper is on the street if you know where the boundary markers are for the street.
I know where the boundaries are.
But there's no market.
Want to do a town-to-town measure, I'll show you.
Well, there's no survey to show where those, where those boundary markers are.
There's brick walls, there's stone walls, there's metal pipes that have been there for fifty-three years I've been down there.
We see, can't see them.
There's cement, pillars in there. The roads there. There's a lot of roads that are there.
Do you want to come up?
I'll just say the camper's gone.
Okay, what, okay. But that, okay, that's a temporary solution.
May I read the rest of the information from the attorney so you'll know what he said? Okay. Question number two. I'm not asking you, I'm trying to give you public information, okay? I have an opinion on this too, and I will express it tonight. But before I do, I want to explain to you what we got from town council, which is the result of the meeting last week, why you're all here. Issue number two. The lawyer is saying issue two was whether the town may clear the full width of the layout of the streets within the neighborhood. One concern expressed by the Board of Selectmen was that the existence of parked vehicles, boats, and structures within the layouts of Park Avenue, Beach Street, Washington Street, and Cherry Street could be removed by the town based upon a concern regarding public safety. In our opinion, based on the present state of affairs of the roads being private and the actual traveled ways being apparently passable to the extent that public safety vehicles would have the ability to access the properties along their streets, we do not believe the Board of Selectmen or any other town board would presently have a basis to order the removal of such items from the layouts outside of the traveled ways, based on a public safety concern. However, in our opinion, if the streets were accepted as public ways, the town would certainly have a basis to keep the layouts of the roads clear along the entire width and length of the town layout. Also, if the ways were accepted as public ways, the town would have the right to take whatever actions it would deem necessary to maintain the ways. Therefore, we would recommend that these streets, which are open to the public, be accepted by the town as public ways. The process for acceptance of public ways is described in MGL, Chapter 82, Sections 22, 23, and 24. Basically, the town would need to have a plan prepared showing the proposed public ways. Such a town would have to be filed with the town clerk at least seven days prior to a town meeting at which the acceptance of the streets would be considered. The town meeting would have to vote to accept the streets. And then, within 120 days after the town meeting, the Board of Selectmen would have to approve an order of taking for the area within the layouts of the streets. We believe any damages to be awarded in connection with takings would be very minimal as the town would be taking areas already shown on a recorded plan as ways within the Dyton Rock Park neighborhood. Since the streets are already laid out on a recorded plan, the streets already are easement areas which benefit all of the property owners within the neighborhood along the entire length and width of the private ways. By converting the ways to public ways, we believe that any damage awards would be quite normal, if any at all. It has been suggested that these roads require substantial work to bring them to the level of what would be an acceptable street under the town subdivision regulations. These roads would not be accepted by the town as a new subdivision under the town subdivision rules and regulations. Rather, they would be considered existing roads to be accepted by the town, not a new subdivision. The roads could be accepted in their present condition and then improved to whatever extent that the town and its highway department deem necessary. So that's strictly talking about the streets. Now, the last thing he addressed, issue three. Issues presented by structures within the layouts of the roads. Building Commissioner James Agia explained that there are issues with property owners who have constructed structures within the street layouts in this neighborhood. Mr. Agia reports that there is one encroaching shed, which is at the intersection of one of the constructed ways and a paper street. That structure has been there for at least ten years. We believe the best approach to that structure would be to take no action unless the structure actually interferes with the ability to pass and repass along the street. If the structure has been there for more than ten years, then as a zoning matter, it cannot be ordered to be removed. If it has been there for more than twenty years, the property owner would likely own the land under, under it by adverse possession. Therefore, we would recommend not taking any action with respect to that structure at the present time. Mr. Agia explained that other structures such as carports have been constructed. If Mr. Agia deemed such structures to be in violation of the town zoning bylaws, we would recommend taking action to order their removal. We have been informed that some property owners have suggested that they have the right to utilize the area up to the center line under the theory that they would be deemed to own up to the center line of the way. However, for zoning purposes, a lot generally is not deemed to include any area outside of the boundaries of a parcel of land, including the area within the layout of an abutting roadway. In our opinion, the property owners are incorrect to rely on the theory that they own up to the center line of an abutting road when they place structures within the street layouts. Such actions do not comply with zoning. Even though abutting property owners may have some ownership rights to the center of the roadway, those rights are subject to the right of others to use the roadway. It's been suggested that public safety may be used as a reason for ordering the removal of items from the layout of the street. However, as indicated above, we do not believe that public safety would provide such a basis unless either the fire or police department expressed concerns about the accessibility of the properties within the Dyton Rock Park. And then he says, "Thank you for the opportunity to respond." So this is what town council has said. And the first one I mentioned was, he talks about the survey, which is what Selectmen Taylor has mentioned. And the other one talks about some of the issues that came up. So, this was distributed last week. Anyone who was here, these were photos, they were left on the table so people could look at. So that's what the attorney has said. He's addressed some of the issues in there. And yes, we all know, there have been personal issues down there between three, four, five residents who live close to one another that relate to, whether it's farm animals, or sheds, or brush piles, or things of that nature. Okay? Lights was another one. The town addressed as much of that as it could legally. And then, the next question was, and the last email I sent out prior to the one I sent out this past weekend was, let's everybody call a truce. Let's get the ruling from town council, which is what I've just told you about. So this is where we are tonight, okay? This is what we have. So now you know what we know.
We're looking for a solution to some.
Nicole Allen, Beach Street. To me, the solution seems very simple. The owner who does not know where their boundary is needs to have his place surveyed. There is no need to have the whole park surveyed, waste our tax-paying money for somebody who doesn't know where their boundaries are. I know where mine are because mine was surveyed. I paid the bill. If he needs to know where his is, he can survey it himself, not the town. We don't need, I don't know about anybody else here. I don't need mine surveyed.
We're not surveying property with.
But he wants to know where his property in the road begins. So, let him do that.
The point right now is that we don't know where the road begins because we don't have a survey.
But if he had his place surveyed, he would know. And if he's the only one who has the issue with it, let him deal with it.
But I, I guess the concern is that if we don't know where the roadway is, then we are at, our hands are tied as far as trying to enforce anything.
Well, I know where mine is because mine was surveyed. So, that's all set.
In this particular case, if we don't know where the boundary is, then we're, our hands are tied as to what we can do down there as far as where, where things are parked or, or, you know, that's the issue. And that kind of what, what started this all. We're trying to, we're trying to come up to a solution so that people can.
So you're gonna, so you're gonna start, if this happens, cars are gonna start being moved. Does that mean you're gonna start cutting, cutting down trees and loading stuff back and taking grass away that we've been maintaining for years?
No, 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 we're not gonna do that. That's what, that's what.
You guys used to plow this year. They're always throwing grass on my yard every year. And I'm always raking it up. And I'm getting sick of it.
Would you not want us to plow the roads then? I mean, that's another alternative, but then you guys would.
And then you bending over the sign that I paved for.
Then, but then, okay. If we, if, if that's a concern, then the town doesn't maintain the roads and then you would have to come, have a, funds to order to clear the roads and grade the roads and that kind of thing.
So we get a deduction on taxes?
No, no, unfortunately. I know, we're trying to find, we're trying to find a solution that works for everybody.
I would like to say, I do not want.
Can you make anybody out there?
Excuse me, she's at the podium.
Yeah, go ahead.
I do not want my roads made public. I like my private area. I do not want it made public. I benefit nothing by making them public. I, I'm completely and utterly against it.
I have two questions that I would like to show our hands on. I have two questions that I would like a show of hands on. First of all, we've talked about the bylaw that would maintain the roads they are right now, the gravel, filling in the potholes, grading them, and plowing the snow. By a show of hands, how many of you people are amenable to the town accepting the bylaw so we're doing it legally?
Yes.
So that's not a problem. As far as the town moving ahead with the survey to determine the layout of the roads with the intent to go for making those roads acceptable in the town, how many are in favor and how many are opposed? Show of hands.
Well, one was...
In favor. Opposed. Okay. I want to address, I said I would express an opinion, this is a personal opinion. What we said at the beginning of this was, we're not, you're here because, is there anyone here that doesn't live in the park but lives on another road? No, no, not, come on, guys.
We might move your...
I didn't finish, yeah, we put them outside. What I was wondering was, was there anyone in this room tonight who was living on an unaccepted gravel road in town that's not in the park? Okay, I want to address unaccepted gravel roads in the town of Dyton, period. We have one road that we have been on, and we're going to go back to look at it again because there were several chimney fires there last winter. And the problem was, it's an unaccepted gravel road in Ancient Way, that when the fire broke out, they managed to just about squeeze the fire truck in there, then they couldn't get it out. They had to back out all the way, and it was so narrow that they had to have people walking along the sides to get the truck out. We talked to the people up there when we visited. The consensus is, they don't want that road accepted. However, they agree that if the town wants to go in, widen it enough for a fire truck, which is still gonna make it a one-lane road, remove a boulder that's sticking out, and possibly, if somebody will allow us to make a turnaround at the end so that a public safety vehicle, like an ambulance, fire truck can go up and come out, that's what they were willing to talk about. So you're not the only people that are saying, don't, we don't want our street accepted. We have other streets in town that are gravel, and there are homes on them. We haven't heard from those people.
I think we need to stick to discussion.
But, the main thing is, the main thing is, I want you to understand that, number one, it's not just, yours is the largest section of town. But I also want you to know something from a personal standpoint. My personal opinion is, go with the bylaw that we already asked you about, leave the town road, leave those roads the way they are, because what was brought... What was brought to this board initially, and to the best of my knowledge is, is kind of still going on, dealt with a neighborhood dispute, not the entire neighborhood, a small section. I can't understand and see how, even if all of you agreed that it's okay for us to accept the roads, it's gonna solve the personality conflicts that were brought to this board initially. I think as taxpayers, we need to take care of your needs as far as the roads go, public safety, and giving us the bylaw will do that, okay? I also have really serious concerns about federal agencies if the town accepts those roads. Those of you who have lived in this town remember the North End sewer situation with the pollution? The federal government just came in and said, "You will put in sewage," okay? I'm afraid that accepting those roads, once we do that, we're inviting problems. Now, that isn't to say they still might come down the road.
I think we need to stick to the issue.
That's where I'm coming from. I'm only expressing my personal opinion, but I'm also the person in town who's dealt with land-taking on two bridge, three bridge projects and the Center Street sidewalk thing. I know what's involved. Jack, I'm expressing my opinion, please. I made it clear, I'm expressing my opinion, and I have an experienced opinion when it comes to land-taking. And yes, ladies and gentlemen, you are correct, because when surveys are done, some of your boundaries aren't gonna change at all, because the engineer is going to go to the registry and look up the records. However, there will be others, when streets are laid out, that will change, and there could be damages paid, they might be minimal. I've done this enough to, so when you say that, yes, there is the potential. So, I'm just expressing my opinion, and I want you to know where I'm coming from.
And I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I would assure you that before we did anything, we would make sure that those issues that Nancy talked about were addressed so that we don't get into a situation where we, you know, we're gonna cause... Our purpose here is not to do anything to disrupt your neighborhood. Our purpose here is to hear you, hear what you have to say, and consider that, and we appreciate your, all your input. Ma'am? Could you, could you...
My name is Elizabeth Grothier, I live on 12, uh, 9 Beach Street. I like it the way it is, I've been there 57 years. I love my neighbors, everything's fine. Why stir up a can of worms when you don't need to? It's nice there. I mean, all right, everybody, don't get me, I don't know half of them, I didn't even know half of my neighbors tonight. I don't need Lynn. I know him, I went and seen him. But what I'm trying to say, leave well enough alone. We're happy the way we are.
Yes.
We are, we're happy the way we are.
Sounds like this...
And I wanted, I, I mean, I gotta know for white hairs, no, I don't wanna go bald on this.
No. I've been very quiet, just wanted to say something.
Go ahead.
So I'm, I just wanted to be quiet and listen, I was just taking in everything. I just wanted to address what you said before. I apologize for making that comment. I was erroneously under the, and thank you, thank you for being there, and you schooled me. I was under the impression wrongly that it was already public property, so I do apologize for making that comment, and I just wanted to let you all know that. I also wanted to say, I appreciate you, I know you probably have better things to do on a Wednesday night, like make dinner, but I do appreciate you coming out and letting us know personally how you feel, and that will always be considered, at least, you know, from my end, I will always consider that when making a decision. And what I don't want you to think is that I personally would ever make a decision without considering what the community that would be affected most by it thought. So I just wanted to thank you again.
I agree with Brett, oh, I agree. Yep. You don't need to restate your name, we know you are now.
That brings, what you just said brought up another question. When I watched the video from last week, one of the quotes that you had made, Mr. Taylor, was, "Not that our decision would be solely based on the opinion of the residents." How does, how does it become law that this, our roads become public if it's not based on the people that it actually affects?
Yeah, maybe that was the wrong way to put it. I mean, it would be, it would be, it would only come to fruition if we passed a bylaw. But, you know, I probably shouldn't have said it that way, because certainly that's why you're all here, and that's why we're having this meeting tonight. We're not gonna do anything without, you know...
So our opinion matters and will make a difference as to whether or not it becomes public or stays private?
Yeah.
Praise the Lord.
Because I'm the one that wrote that question down, and I just wanna make sure that nothing is going to happen, and the rug's not gonna be pulled off from any of that.
Absolutely not. And I think, I think, I think the important thing to know is that...
I think we would invite you in.
There was something in voting, in the recent voting that said something about...
Eminent domain.
In eminent domain.
Oh, that's, that's a standard, that is a standard motion that is on the warrant every single year. Annually, the town meeting has to give the town permission to settle damages and property claims that may result from, whether it's, you know, you straighten out a road and cut off a corner and there's some land involved. But I will also tell you, the other thing that this town has done since, at least since I was on the board the last time, and we had the first big bridge project, whenever we have a project, and the latest one is the Center Street sidewalk, we require, the town requires a separate project-specific vote to allow eminent domain if necessary. We have never used eminent domain since I've been doing these projects, going back to 2007, '08, whenever that was. So there were two things involved. One of them is, it's a standard thing for eminent domain, if Mr. Ferry has to take a little piece here, he has the right to do it. He can't take a big chunk or reconstruct roads and all this stuff. But when we have a project such as the Center Street sidewalk, that's a project-specific vote, so if we need eminent domain, we can use it. But I can tell you, we've negotiated with all of the property owners on Center Street involved. Every bridge project, we negotiate, excuse me, we, we have never used eminent domain, and the projects that have come down the pipe in this town are the ones that I've worked on since 2007. So I will tell you that right now. So that's what that, I'll call it, the, that's the boilerplate language, okay? That's, that's done every year so that, Mr. Ferry, I could see you, get your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, that language, especially when we're using the federal and state money that we enjoy outside of what you vote on in the budget, that's required by law, that has to be in place and give them the power, as boilerplate, as boilerplate language. If that's not voted on, we can't use the money, federal and state money that we have access to.
And the other thing about eminent domain, I mean, like Nancy said, it hasn't been used. It's only, it would only be used for the, if it was in the best interests of the whole town for some, so it's not just an arbitrary thing that you go take somebody's land, it's not, it's not that simple.
Let's call it what it is, it is a last-case scenario when nothing else has worked. It is not something we just, oh, let's just take it by eminent domain. It has not happened since I was here, I doubt it will happen my whole time that I'm here, because like Selectmen Gulat does say, they do work with the person whose property it is in order to come to an agreement that works for both parties.
Yes, I'd like to say a few things. Well, everyone, I know that, you all know, I have the utmost respect for everybody in this room, everybody in this town, I treat this town like it's my own. I think what I've heard tonight is democracy at its best, the people have spoken, you've made it clear how you want the neighborhood to stay. I've also listened to people talk about their roots and how many years they've lived in this community. The problem that I see going forward, and what is evident through some of our past meetings, is we have new people moving into the neighborhood. I know of at least four since I've been here, and that's six years. Those new people coming in don't have the sense of community where you all realize that you all own the roads collectively and the beach collectively. So it would behoove you, when these new people come to town, try and reach out to them and explain to them how the community works, how things work down there, so that when they do things, they, you know, they're property owners too. They come into this area, they don't expect that they live in a situation where they have private roads and a beach that's shared by all, they don't know that. So, you know, we don't educate them, we see them when there's problems, where they come in for a permit or they come in for questions. So, you know, there's been a great sense of community in this room tonight, and I see in the next 20 years that I'm gonna be working here, there's gonna be a lot more new faces down there in that park. So I would just, I would, I would suggest that you just try to have that discussion. Otherwise, we get involved, and here we are. So, thanks.
I just want to say something to you. I grew up in Berkeley, on a dirt road with one house on it, which was the house that we grew up in. In the summertime, the grass grew up the middle of the road, so it was two ruts. The town to this day, part of it got paved because there was a big development, but they put a cul-de-sac at the top, but then there's a little paved ramp that is the rest of that road. It's still one car wide, it's still, it doesn't have grass in the middle, I'll say that much, it's gravel, and it stays gravel. But I will also tell you that there is a house now beyond where I live, and the town in Berkeley maintains it, it's never been accepted. Maybe they accepted the park that got paid by the developer, but the rest of the road never got paved. And I understand exactly what you're talking about, your neighborhood. Your neighborhood has close houses. We were the only ones on the street with woods in the back and farmland on three sides, so it was the wide-open spaces. But I understand what your concerns are, all right? I know what it's like to live on a road where when a car comes by, it's coming to our house, you know who's in the neighborhood, you know who doesn't belong in the neighborhood. And I'm interested in what's best for the town, that's why I talked about the entire town and the roads. And certainly, the people that we have to visit again on this other piece, other road, I understand exactly where they're coming from, and certainly, I'm hoping they're gonna be amenable to have us that, understand that bylaw and agree with that bylaw that says we can provide the minimum maintenance. They have told us point-blank, we don't want this turned into a town road, and I have no problem with that, okay? So, I think, again, this board is trying to do what they feel is in the best interests of the town. When we had the meeting, we said, "We're gonna contact Town Council with the following questions." You just heard the response we got. The email I sent out to whoever got it and whoever shared it was, "We're gonna discuss it, pass this on to your neighbors, come to the Selectmen's meeting, we want your input, we want your feedback." But no one's gonna try to ram this down your throat, and we're not gonna be taking action against you with eminent domain. I mean, not on this, not over this matter, this is not the kind of thing that we do, okay? But you have to be aware of, we, we said these were the issues, these were the questions raised, we followed up, we got the opinion, and that's where we are here tonight. You've given us feedback, you're saying yes on one, and you're saying no, we don't want that or the other. We understand that. So I appreciate you coming. I'm glad that, when I asked for a truce a month or so ago, we got a truce so that we could move ahead and get this discussion out there, okay? But, other than that, I would just say, thank you very much for coming in. The opinions I expressed tonight are solely mine, this board has not voted or taken action to do anything other than to contact Town Council. But, I will also tell you, it's important that everyone stays involved. I've never, quite frankly, seen most of you at town meeting, and I may have never seen any of you at town meeting, but this is your town, and you need to be involved. So thank you for coming tonight anyhow, okay?
Yeah, we all appreciate you all coming down and expressing you, 'cause, you know, I've learned a lot, and it's good to know where you're coming from and why you're coming from that position. Our attempt here was, you know, a number of issues were brought to our attention, we talked to our attorneys about it, to try and come up with a solution that we could satisfy, and have the authority to satisfy everybody in the neighborhood. So that was our intent, you know? So I just say, and our responsibility is to do what is best for the town. You are part of the town, and we're not, we're not discounting that at all. So I just want you to know that, we're here, we're here, we're here to, hear what you have to say and act appropriately, so, yes, sir.
Do we, you're not gonna spend $10 to get things, land, surveyed?
I don't know, we haven't, we haven't discussed that yet.
You can stay for that.
That's one of the, that's one of the things we have to make a decision on tonight, so we'll discuss that in just a minute, but I want to get all the other...
If I may, just, I got the sense from, just from the beginning, that everybody came in thinking that a decision had already been made, absolutely not. The reason it was continued tonight as old business was precisely because we wanted to hear back from everybody, so again, I do appreciate it, and I hope you'll find that when you contact us and when you reach out and let us know how you feel, it's heard, and we do listen, and we do internalize it, and we do appreciate it.
'Cause I want to assure everybody, this board is very concerned about open government and transparency, and, you know, that's what we're trying to do, and that's why you're all here.
You watch the meeting, online.
Because it could have been, you know, it could have been, we could have not, we could have done just the usual postings, but we reached out to you to make sure you knew about this meeting, so I just want everybody to know that, and that's how we operate, and that's how we'll continue to operate, and so...
And thank you for holding us accountable.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if the lady who contacted me that lives on the Ancient Way got my message, we haven't forgotten you, we will be back to do another site visit.
Not in the winter, please.
Yeah, not, it won't be when it's freezing cold, but we will be back, and certainly, I hope if you watch this tonight, or if you catch it on the town website, the important thing is, you're part, you're living in an area on a road that is also part of this discussion. So if you wanna contact us before we go out, that's fine, if not, when we go out for the site visit, we'll let you know we're coming, and you can let us know what your feedback is. We already know that the consensus in your neighborhood is, we want the road accepted, we don't want it changed. We understand that, and certainly, when we come out for the site visit, we'll be talking about making it wide enough for a public safety vehicle, the boulder that sticks out into the road, and possible turnaround. But in any case, this whole discussion about that bylaw would affect those kinds of roads, so anyhow, I'm sure we'll be in touch with you, but just to let you know, we haven't forgotten you. forgotten you.
2651 Pleasant Street. I don't live on, Leah, I don't live on Harrell. Yes, I, but Park Avenue, Beach Street, and one of the paper roads. Right now, the town can't really do much because, as you said, the roads are not defined by, by a survey. So anything that is parked on the road right now, is that fine to be parked there because the roads aren't defined? The things that are currently there, are they fine? Is there anything the town could do to remove those? I guess that's really directed at you, Commissioner, because you are the person who is in charge of those.
Based on the letter that was written by Attorney Gay, which is the Town Council, the answer is no.
Okay. Can you stop anything from being added to the roads?
The answer is no.
Okay. Is there any space amount that things can be added to or not added to, to, that would be removed? So if there was a large structure or a container or a bunch of vehicles placed, is there anything that can happen to have those things removed?
My intent as a town official was to go down that road, no pun intended, based on the actions of this board. So if the streets are not going to be accepted, then based on that same letter, may, those structures may be subject to zoning, and zoning within town does require certain setbacks. So I held off on all that till we sorted this all out. So when the decision's made, if the roads aren't accepted, then I probably will look at them as structures that are required to meet certain setbacks. If they don't meet the setbacks, then they'll be in violation of zoning.
Okay, so if the roads are not surveyed, structures can be added, and they'll just have to fall into the zoning setback requirements.
Setback requirements, right, based on what type of structure it is, yes.
Okay. What about anything that blocks travel? Can that be?
That's different. That's different. You can't block travel. Blocking travel would be a public safety issue, and that would, but there's nothing down there yet that's been erected that, based on the letter and based on town officials' visits, that actually obstructs the path of policeifying.
Yeah, public safety always trumps everything else.
So as long as a structure or items, anything, is placed that does not obstruct safety vehicles or is not on personal property, there is nothing the town can do to have it removed, currently as it states in, from gay and gay.
If the towns, if the Board of Selectmen choose not to accept the roads, then there may be an impact through zoning enforcement, the structures that are erected that don't meet the setback requirements. But I haven't made that determination yet on any of the structures that have been erected.
I mean, the problem that creates for, for the issue is that if we don't know where the boundaries are in the roads, then you don't know if the structure's in the road or not in the road.
And the only way to know that is through a survey.
Correct.
For, for the roads, not for property. I understand if people get their personal property surveyed, that doesn't determine where the road is. That determines where your property is.
Well, yeah.
Hold on, let's back up a little bit. There is, there is enforcement action for that. If the roads are not accepted, and the structures remain, and the zoning enforcement drawn against them, then the person who actually creates the violation is responsible for determining where it is two-dimensionally in space, and they have to prove to me through a land survey as to where the structure exists. So that, so the survey will have to get involved, yes?
No, so the survey has to get involved from a person, like an individual, or?
Whoever erected the structure.
Whoever erected the structure.
Right.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments?
Does anyone have any questions about the sections of that letter I read relative to that opinion? I mean, I think it was pretty clear as far as what he said in there, what could be done and what can't be done, which kind of addresses what you just asked.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, I think, I think, I don't know what the, I think we'll table that discussion about accepting the roads.
Will we discuss those next week? One week?
One week, Saturday?
Well, well, accepting the roads or not is not a decision we make, that we make.
Correct.
It's a decision, if, if we went that route, it'd be a warrant article that would be addressed at town meeting, and the town...
I thought we were voting on New Business, G. Building Commissioner to be awarded bid?
Yeah, I'm going to get to that next. Yeah. It's one, I just want to be...
So what I'm trying to say, if we miss a town meeting, when is the vote going to happen?
Well, whenever the town meeting is scheduled.
So let's back up. So the way it would work is the Board of Selectmen would either agree or not agree to put together a warrant article to accept the roads. So that would be stage one. Stage two would be going to the special town meeting or whatever town meeting it would be, which you would know about, obviously. Absolutely, everybody would. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So if it's a special town meeting, it's not going to be a regular town meeting?
Well, the next we have is a special.
Yeah.
Because everybody in town will decide on your little property. What do you got to care about? Twenty-nine people, town meeting is the whole town, and it goes by majority vote.
That's right, that's right.
Correct.
So that's one thing you don't want to get to town meeting. I thought someone said something about for town meeting, you would have another meeting.
Well, we'd have a public hearing before we have a...
If it's a bylaw.
Before it got on?
Yeah. Absolutely, correct. And that would be if the board agreed to put together a warrant article for a town meeting. Correct, yeah.
I have one more, I just have one more thing. You said something about emailing.
Why don't you stay, at least, stay...
Did I give you your email address?
Could you stand up so we...
Name and address.
Formality. I'm sorry.
Because I can't even see it right there.
Brenda Highland, Park Avenue. I was just wondering about, you said something about emailing residents down there. Could I give you an email?
What I'm talking about, I was responding to a number of emails that came in about situations that started the whole thing.
To us, directly.
So when, and they were, there were specific issues that were brought up that started the whole thing, okay? The emails got to a point that there were so many fast and furious that they almost turned into arguments online with individuals who live in the neighborhood. That's when I sent and asked if we could have a truce or a ceasefire or whatever you call it, and that was on it because I said we would get council's opinion, which we did. So it's not that we have a special mailing, emailing that we send to people, but what, I think what Selectmen's Graphists was going to say, or what was mentioned out there. Any bylaw, regardless of what the content of it is, has to go to a public hearing before it goes to a town meeting, but before it even gets there. Let us assume that a bylaw is created and we're thinking, whatever is, we're thinking about proposing this. There are other boards in this town that have got to weigh in on this. It could be zoning, it could be planning, it could be the Board of Health, Conservation Commission. All of them would have to look at this and also give a recommendation. And if one of those boards said absolutely not for the following reasons, any of them would have the opportunity to speak. So if there were a proposal to actually write the bylaw for the acceptance of these streets, it's got to go to planning, it's got to go to zoning. Conservation would probably look at it because of your proximity to the water. The Board of Health would certainly have to get involved because you all have private sector down there. We would probably hear from the Water District because I assume you've all got public water down there. So it's not just the Board of Selectmen is going to do this and whip it out and have a hearing and put it on the line. It doesn't work that way, okay? There's a lot that would go into it, so, and it would be well-publicized. We have to put it in a local newspaper. We now, thanks to Brett, we have a active website. This would not be something that no one would be aware of, okay? By the way, if anyone wants to get on the town's mailing list, email, if you give that to the town clerk, she has a regular list when certain things are going to happen, like there's going to be a town meeting, a town election, or whatever it is. She just sends out a general message that says, this is going to happen, okay? So that's another way you can get information.
Yeah, she can go online on the website.
And on the website, you can do that.
If you want to be added to the mailing list, you can just leave your email over here. I'll do it for you, okay?
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Anything else?
Mr. Ferry, did you wish to comment on anything? Other than saying you don't live, you don't live on a dirt road. You don't live on an unacceptable dirt road.
No, I just agree with Jim. I mean, new people come in, someone's going to share a file, something.
Yep. Got to teach them.
Somebody's going to get fired.
Yep.
I just want to say one other thing. If we have a warrant article to accept these streets and you all show up, I don't think I'll be at that town meeting.
You're going to bring up...
Okay, the last...
We talked about, on that letter, we talked about Beach and Park Avenue and Washington and Cherry. Is there any, any other street that wasn't mentioned here tonight?
Just Baker Streets.
Oh, okay, all right. Because I know, obviously, Pleasant Street is the front street, if you will, of the park. Okay, just wondering.
You're going to go to G?
Yeah, I'm going to go.
Yep, yep. We should act on B and C, come on business formally.
Yeah, we're not, we're just going to table, I guess.
We still have to, there's still a process for that.
Okay, somebody want to...
Selectmen Gulat.
Make a motion to do so.
Or do you...
Which one are we on?
We're still on B and C, Old Business, and we're figuring out how to segue.
No, we acted on, B is done. That's the bylaw.
So C is the one.
Tabled.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table action on acceptance of town roads. No, I got to add something to that, that we table action on accepting private roads. I think that covers all of them, no?
I'd be careful because we have others that we're discussing right now.
So I think...
Of Park, of Dyton Rock Park, private roads.
So I think we, yeah, just, let's talk about Dyton Rock Park.
No, wait a minute, no, no. If we're talking about a bylaw, it wouldn't be the whole town. We're talking about private roads possibly becoming accepted as town roads. So we've got to address all of them.
But you don't have to accept all of the roads that are unaccepted at the same time. You would have to do them individually.
We have to, I don't know, but we have discussion on accepting roads and new subdivisions. Perhaps maybe the motion could be existing roads?
Yeah, well, why don't we do, why don't we research it more before we, let's just table this and look into it to make sure we get it all straight.
All right, so how about if I make a motion that just says that we take under advisement any further recommendations regarding acceptance of town roads, which is kind of what's on the agenda.
Right, that's right.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, if not, all fifths say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, but let's drop down to G under New Business, the recommendation of the Building Commissioner to award a bid for survey, Dyton Rock Park roadway survey. Do you want to give us your opinion about that now, or?
Yeah, well, I, based on the letter given from Town Council, one of the options was to accept the roads. So under the direction of Selectmen, acting as an agent under Board of Selectmen, I solicited bids for surveys to survey the roads known as Dyton Rock Park. We had one response, two surveyors didn't respond. We had one response, and I believe that was $7,800, $75,000?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it really isn't my recommendation to you as to whether to accept it or not. I solicited the bids.
Yep, okay.
I presented to the board, so I defer to the board to make the motion on approval.
Don't think I would, I would say, whether we do it, it's just, if we, if we accept to do a survey, doesn't mean we accept, we're accepting the roads.
But why would you even do it if it's not helping?
Well, yeah, that's what, that's what we're trying to make sure, yeah.
Let's, let's somewhere else, you survey them all, and then you know exactly where the boundaries are.
It's like, the only thing I'll say, only thing I'll say again, you know, but it's hard to enforce things when you don't know where the boundaries are.
But if it's private, and it doesn't impede, like you said, ambulance or fire, anything like that?
Well, if you guys are willing to live with that.
I agree, I totally agree. The only thing is, this is, and this is just the reality of the issue that we were talking about earlier, is that when there is a problem between two people down there, or has been in the past, they did reach out to us, and then that's how we get involved as a town. So I understand, but I...
I know, I know. You wouldn't have had a problem, I know. But it just gives a, it makes it difficult for us to enforce anything if we don't know where the boundaries are for the roads.
It just seems like a waste of our money.
Okay. Okay, I will entertain whatever anybody wants to make.
I'm not going to make that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, which one are we on?
G. New Business, G.
Six, oh, six G. Mr. Chairman, I move that we table action on awarding a bid for a survey of the Dyton Rock Park area.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No discussion on the table.
You know, fifths say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we defer that.
The other thing I would say is to anyone who may be unhappy with the action the board has taken tonight relative to the layout of the streets and the survey, everything possible that we could do under the law has been done. If there are people watching or people here present who are saying, the town does nothing about this, I want you to know, that's not true. Everything we could possibly do legally, we have done tonight. The only other option that was mentioned tonight is a potential zoning violation. If it's brought to Mr. Aguirre's attention, he would look into it. So if there are personal disputes between neighbors about they can't get along or you're putting something on my property, those are civil matters, and I would urge you, if you feel aggrieved, you take civil action. Because those are not town of Dyton taxpayers' issues.
Absolutely. Thank you. Again, I want to stress how, or reiterate how grateful we are that you all came down tonight, and I want to assure you, the only reason we're here talking about this, we're trying to do what's best for, for the town and what's best for you guys, so, you know, I'm glad you all came down and expressed your opinion, and appreciate it.
Can we just continue?
Well, we're...
That says table, does that mean it goes on the back corner until another time?
Well...
It could sit there forever.
Yeah. And if we, and if we do bring it back up, we'll certainly have the same kind of meeting here. We're not, we're not going to do it behind closed doors. I assure you that.
I think the other thing that we did tonight is when you gave us consensus on the bylaw to maintain the roads the way we're doing it right now, if those people living in other other towns and road, not in your area, when we talk to those, especially the site visit we have to make, we can say, if you didn't see the meeting, this is what we've done. We did have consensus from the majority of people living in an area where there are a lot of unaccepted streets, that they want us to move ahead with the bylaw to maintain those streets to the level they're being maintained now. We just want you to know, you are the individuals. We are not looking to take your streets, all right? And there's only one other, I believe, that, that we're maintaining. Is that true, Mr. Ferry? As far as really maintaining because it's so narrow and the rock, the other gravel roads are in, I'll say, better condition?
Correct, yes, they are in better.
All right, so, so when we meet with those other people and do that site visit, we're not going in there with a heavy hand and saying, we're here to take your street or our house. We're going to say, we had a look at it, we're going to talk about what we're going to do here, and the consensus of the people that came to our Selectments meeting want us to move ahead with this bylaw, so we are going to move ahead with the bylaw for maintenance, okay? So that's what that's all about. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.